Pennington on the end, who is a board member, and Janelle Neal, who is also working, an assistant at Willamette Falls. And I'm a board member on the Finance Committee, and I'm delighted to showcase-
You present, Westland?
...for Willamette Falls Television.
She's actually unincorporated Clackamas County.
Oh, thank you, unincorporated Clackamas County. Thank you.
So your board is made up of, other than just Oregon City, Westland?
Well, she's on the Budget Committee.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're used to seeing our own board members, so.
Yeah, she wanted to make sure that you should be there now.
Oh, that's good. So, thank you for clarifying, yes.
The chairman has just cleaned out the hospital, so.
Yes, and doing quite well. Basically, what I would like to do is showcase what's happened during the last year and let you know some of the fun things that are coming along for our future year. So, we'd like you to really think of Willamette Falls, and I have a PowerPoint here, and I have some slides. Actually, if you want a summary of the PowerPoint show, I can pass it around as well. Here you go. Some smaller versions. Four, oh, there we go. Whoops, backwards, please. Thank you. So, we would like to think of ourselves as a viable resource, and with that, we are very proud to do government and education programs. Some of those government programs that you may be familiar with, and I'll go through this quickly, and you can read the list as well as I can, are some of the state-of-the-city addresses. We had a very, very successful volunteer recognition event. Neighborhood associations can come under the scope of what we can do for non-governmental activities. We've done Oregon City Police Department training programs. We had a beautiful dump stopper program that was featured for several years that was very successful as well, lots of cleaning up that was done. The downtown cleanup, the mayor's minutes, lots of those features. In our education, we have had the Family Focus Forum, senior projects, charter school projects, the Oregon City Children's Theater productions, youth development field trip studio production tours, and media camps. And we have a fun one that's coming up again this summer. We'd like to think of ourselves as part of the complete community's focus, and with that, we have many levels of areas that we are focusing in, including civic awareness, responsibility, micro-community connectivity, getting down to the one-on-one level and really building communities. We'd like to be a facility access for community organizations to meet, and also match community outreach with media volunteerism. And what we're doing is pulling people willingly and excitingly into the studio to develop their own projects, and that has been a lot of fun. Our vision for connectivity for the future includes much on what you see on the Internet nowadays with YouTube. Our version will be a web-based connectivity for video on-demand. We'll have complete media integration with that. We have some expansion that is coming up that's planned for this next year that includes a move, and with that move, the facility will become larger and be able to deliver cost-effectively more programs and in a budget-neutral position, which is very important nowadays. Our vision for growth includes aggressive increase of volunteerism, and we're recruiting and setting up a more formal volunteerism program than we've had in the past. Melody is very excitedly signing people up. We had a gal come in to rent cameras the other day who had her MBA and is retired from this, a city manager position and wants to volunteer at Willamette Falls. So, we, of course, took her name. We'll be getting more and more.
I hope this is serious.
Oh, I'm sorry, a managerial position. Excuse me. Thank you, yes. No competition there, but we do hope to really have a very strong volunteer pool, and it's growing aggressively. Our future includes a very exciting integration with the high school, in that we will have a model that will allow students to come in as interns to develop capstone-type projects where that they can go out into the community and build their own projects. It's a model that I've helped with in the past that I'm really excited to help with in the future with our move. And we can bring the students in and actually do service projects very cost-effectively and a win-win for them. I really love to do that. So, you'll hear more about that as we develop those internship opportunities. We'll have expanded community partnerships, and we have a wonderful marketing focus with Karen on our board. We're lucky to have that. Our, Willamette Falls' vision for a media outlet includes what we currently have, some of full-scale production, engineering consultation, education and training, and the internship programs. With channel management, you may or may not know of these services that we offer, and full-channel management is, Willamette Falls is a miniature version of what's done on a very, very big scale for Channel 2, Channel 6, all of that. I don't know if you're aware of the quality that comes out of this station, but I'm delighted to just showcase that for you because I'm quite proud of what they do and accomplish. So, media management, remote operations, web streaming, community reader boards, all of those products will be enhanced. Here's our peg channel usage, and I'm moving forward to keep to your timeframe. I'll help you catch up, I always do. You'll notice, you can look at that graph and see where our total airtime has been quarter by quarter. Public hours of programming is very exciting, 6,400. Look at that on Channel 23, over 8,000. Channel 28 is over 7,000 hours of programming, 7,000 hours. Full-scale production, we do consultations, we do script consultation, production shoots, post-production, which is the development of all these features. And this is, if you've ever shopped around in the community, which I have had to do, it's quite expensive to be able to use those resources and fit those into a budget model. To have this facility being able to do that with the level of professionalism they have is quite dandy, quite dandy. Here's the peg channel usage. You see that the editing suite has remained about the same for second and fourth quarter, but we have an increase of equipment usage, which will eventually translate as the, as the equipment goes out, then the editing suites will be used. We'll see the editing suite use increase as we're offering more education and training. Studio productions, field productions, nonlinear editing, very strange stuff. Usually, when you think of nonlinear editing, if you look at the picture sort of to the left bottom, that's a typical, it looks like Wizard of Oz. So, production studios, if you've not been in, please come in for a tour. There is so much going on for just one aspect of setting up those, every part of the station is just phenomenal. Program participants, 150 classes, students at 300 now, and it will be growing exponentially. 883 visitors this last year. How many of you came down for the Halloween open house? Is that fabulous? So, this year, we actually had an ambulance outside. It was not part of the event. It was, we actually, I helped a woman who fell, and we called 911. It was not part of the Halloween open house, but the lines increased dramatically.
But everyone thought it was.
We didn't do that, no, that's just my nursing background just happened to come in handy at that point.
You'd do anything to try.
You know, we had really good crowds afterwards, but then I think they were kind of afraid to come in. But the, if you look at the faces on the, as the children come through, it's just a delightful and a very well-attended community activity. Engineering and consultation video, conferencing, seminars, media seminars, think of all of the seminars that you can outreach through this television station. Think of that, the networking, the technical support, and here is our future. So, in brief, short minutes, I really have a lot of pride for this whole facility and the staff that's here, and I hope that you will drop in. If you haven't, join us, think of things that you want produced, and let us help you because it's a great, great facility. Questions?
Yeah, what's your timeline for moving?
July is our anticipated timeline.
July could be, our lease is up at our current facility, July 1.
Actually, you need to come up to the mic, please, Melody. Thank you.
I should know this, right?
And then introduce yourself for the mic again.
Hi, I'm Melody Ashford. The move has kind of been pushed back because we've been working with the school and the current programs in the building, and ROTC is currently finishing up, and they're supposed to be out, I guess, in about a week, and we didn't want to be the big bad guys and push out great programs. And honestly, there's a lot of stuff that, I mean, gosh, 20 years, some, I mean, the basement's scary. There's, I mean, we have everything that was ever made with TVs since the.
Yeah. We'll talk about that later.
So, anyways, there's a lot of work prior to moving up there that we've been doing and working at doing before we do the big move. So, anticipated, the full facility move starts June 1st to actually, you know, all the furniture and everything, but we'll start integrating in the next two weeks as far as cleaning, painting, scrubbing. The building needs a lot of cosmetic work, so we're looking forward to doing that.
Volunteers?
Barn raising, yeah. Really looking forward to, you know, who can paint and who can, you know, do that, this, that, and the other thing. I know I'll be, I'll probably be in jeans for the next two months and t-shirts and full of paint, and probably not pleasant to sit by, but, you know, we'll get it done.
Right?
Thank you.
Rocky?
I'm excited about the increase in partnership with, sorry, the students at the high school. I have a lot of students who are doing a lot of really amazing video production projects. And then I also just want to welcome you as a neighbor.
Oh, great.
I live a block down, spent two years of my life in what I call my building.
Your building.
And two years of my life as a teacher, but four years as a student. Of all the historic places in the city, that's another one that hopefully someday we see its full potential. If you've ever seen pictures of that building with all of its ornament in the windows, and it's as extraordinary as the Carnegie's, or if not more, with the way that it originally looked. And so, I know it's going to take a lot of work, but someday I hope to see that back.
We had some visions because we love that window in the front, and vision and budgets don't always come together, so we had thought about building a mezzanine on that end and incorporating that window so we could have it up, the mezzanine's gone because we just don't have the money. But, yeah, there's always room, like somewhere down in the future, but we do want to keep as much of that natural historic. We also did get the $30,000 grant from the block, the Clackamas.
TV GD.
Yeah, you got it, for doing an ABA accessible because the building's never been ABA accessible. So, we're going to build a really nice ramp and put in ABA bathrooms. And again, we really want this to be a full community center. I mean, media is priority, but there's many other uses for meetings and so forth that the community can use, so we're hoping everybody will.
If you find any art supplies, let me know.
Okay, time for one more question. Daphne?
So, do you have, do you have some kind of IGA with the school district and the parking lot?
It's in the lease, and in fact, I just talked to Ted again today and said, you know, we need to get that lease, and he's been, you know, up to his ears in budgets also, so. But it is a shared parking lot. We'd have designated shared.
Well, that's nice. It's a good situation. Hope it goes well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you so much.
Is there something you can do about that buzz, Renee?
How about the AC?
Thank you.
Can we do something about that buzz?
Is it because these two are together?
That's better.
Let's go.
They're just gone. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, that was mine. Those are mine. My voice is.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move then into the library IGA, which we have in our packet. Scott, are you rocking us through that?
Yes.
Great.
Pull up some.
I don't know that we know how to do that.
I think Renee's going to be pulling up some visual stuff in just a moment here, but while he does that, I'll just kind of give you a quick intro here. There we go. So, I'll get to that in a minute. That doesn't, that's just a map that we'll talk about in a moment. In my briefing on this topic, I would like to review this proposed intergovernmental agreement between, it's between the library district and all of the member cities. And the purpose of doing this is so that you'll be familiar with the background of the district, which I think most of you are, and the purpose of this IGA, which is really what we're going to be talking about, that you'll recognize the major points and issues related to the IGA, and that you'll have any questions or concerns clarified hopefully by the time that we're done here. The goal of this review is ultimately that you'll be informed and be prepared to take formal action on this at an upcoming regular commission meeting, and I'm not quite sure what the date is that we'll be bringing this back to you for formal action, but it will be in the relatively near future. So, talking about the IGA, which is, of course, you've got those in your packets, the main purpose of the IGA is several things. One, it's to agree to act in a cooperative manner and spell out the specific terms between the member partner cities within the district. And I believe there are 13, 13 different cities that are actually the signers on this agreement. So, it's kind of an interesting negotiation. You have to have basically 13 parties agreeing to this, along with the county who's been kind of driving, driving the bus a little bit on this. Two, to describe district governance, spell out how it's going to operate, how the cities will be accountable to the voters and to the other district partners and the formation of the district. Three, the IGA will specify the method by which the district funds will be allocated and how they are to be expended by the cities in accordance with the defined levels of service standards. And lastly, it defines the service area boundaries of all the partner libraries, and I'll talk about each of these things. The negotiations and discussions regarding the IGA up to this point have been, this has been an ongoing process for, actually for several months, even before the vote occurred. There were some initial discussions about this, and then, of course, when the district passed in November, then things really ramped up. So, this draft that you have in front of you is really the culmination of a lot of work, a lot of time and effort. It's something that the partners are hoping is pretty close to the final draft, barring any major glitches which we don't foresee at this point. We committed to entering into this IGA way back when the commission in 2008 entered in, or, excuse me, passed a resolution that said, in essence, we agree to come to this agreement if the district passed. There've been a number of iterations and changes made, including some that were a direct result of Oregon cities, of our cities' feedback to the partners and to the county. We reviewed this with the commission at some other study sessions, I think at least once, maybe a couple of times, and there was some feedback mostly regarding some of the, kind of, I hate to use this word, but sort of strong-handed authority language. It was in the agreement, and it's been softened up quite a bit regarding giving more flexibility. Initially, in the IGA, the capital contribution pledged by the county to the cities was included. However, in this latest version, you'll notice that that has been removed. That is being negotiated as a separate agreement with the county directly between, not between all of the partner cities collectively, but each individual city and the county. So, in other words, we will be negotiating directly with the county for our portion of the capital contribution, which at this point, they've pledged a million dollars to us. We've had a number of discussions around that, that we're working on seeing if there are more dollars that can come this way, but that's to be determined. And that IGA will be completely separated from this, so just understand that that's not included in this. And again, that allows us some individual negotiation ability with the county. I'd like to go.
You said funding is the potential there for land as well?
It's been, that's been discussed, but not, nothing, you know, formal in that regard.
But you say the negotiations will be coming forward.
We could, we could bring that, we could bring that up. That's, yeah, we've, that's a possibility. What I'd like to do is just briefly go through the major points of the IGA. I'm not going to hit every item. If there are specific items in the IGA that you would like to discuss that I don't address, by all means, please let me know. And I'm just going to kind of go through a couple, well, I'll hit each section and tell you what the major points are. I'm going to go relatively quickly, and again, let me know if you want to talk further about any of these. Section 1, the biggest points there are that the Board of County Commissioners is the district board. So, the BCC is the district library board. A district advisory committee will be formed. Every city will select one representative to the committee, which must be appointed by the BCC. So essentially, this city will forward its nomination or recommendation for appointment to that advisory committee, so there'll be 13 people at that table.
Is there any guideline that the local council could determine?
Determine specifically by ourselves.
We can determine that. In fact, that was my next comment, was that that's something that the city commission will need to contemplate. You don't have to decide this before we sign the IGA, but at some point after we're, after we're on board with the IGA, we'll need to select a representative. It could be a library board member, it could be a city commissioner, it could be a staff member, so that needs to be decided at some point. The, probably the biggest and of most interest to most people point in the section 1 is the district revenue, the funding piece. There are, the distribution of funds is based on a formula as well as some defined service maps, which are calculated into that formula. The formula has, basically has two major components. One is the city assessed value, and two is the unincorporated population served component. The city assessed value, in essence, we receive funds equal to our assessed value in our, in our city boundaries. All of the cities collected AV, all of the cities' collected AV portion is returned to us directly. So, we receive back 100% of those funds collected within our city boundaries.
This is, in reading this and making my notes, this is where I have the biggest question, and I want to ask you about this, and if some of our library friends who are here can help us out with this, I'd appreciate it. Back in the campaign last year, I went to various forums on this library district, and remember listening to people that said that the apportionment of these library funds for this was going to be kind of according to need, and that the communities that were the lowest funded communities were the communities that were going to receive the most funds. I remember, I remember going to forums and that being discussed specifically, and that's not the way it is in the chart.
It's not.
And I'm just very concerned about what I heard last fall.
That's not what we heard here. Can you present it to us either?
I have no knowledge of that discussion. I'm not sure where that would have come from. Again, it's basically that the city, the city receives all of its assessed value collection back, and then in the unincorporated population served component, we receive an amount that is tied directly to the percentage of our defined service district in that unincorporated area.
On the final page, shows that chart.
Correct. And in fact, we have, and so now we're going to get to some of the visual stuff here.
Wait, Scott, before I let go of that, does this formula, when this initiative was filed last fall, was the distribution formula part of that filing? I mean, is what we're seeing here essentially what the voters approved that was filed with the county clerk? Okay.
Right, correct. So, our service area, which is actually, what we've got on the map here is on the board of just a couple of different maps, and I'll scroll through these. There's, let's see. There we go. So, this is a wider view of the entire county service, or the county library district, and you can see the OC, Oregon City's boundaries. That includes both our city limits, which is the lighter, and then the colored area, which is our unincorporated area, and then, there we go.
The white and the pale green.
Yes, that's correct.
Are, the pale greens are unincorporated, or rural service district.
That's correct.
Yeah.
We have, our service area, as defined in this library district, is about 57,500 people. Our city limits, as you know, is a little over 30,000. So, we have almost double our population again in our service area. What's interesting about this is that, and important, is that by a large amount, we are the largest service area by population, not by, as you can see, Estacada there goes quite broad, but there's probably about two people every 20 miles there. We are, we are the largest population service district, or service area in this, in this library district by about 20,000 people is the next closest one, and that's Lakos Wego, and they have roughly 37,000 in their area. So, we will receive by far the biggest unincorporated distribution piece in the, in this district. Is the, Nancy, was that other map able to be shown up there? There was a map that specifically outlines, there it is, thank you. That's, that's just the Oregon City District highlighted there, so you can kind of get a better view of, and these are all contained in your packets. So, again, just showing you where our service area is, it's pretty far-reaching. This was defined by a process of determining the amount of, the amount of collection needed within each service area to meet the Oregon Library Association threshold standards. So, in other words, how many, how much area do we need to take in per each city to meet, to meet the threshold standards, as well as, there were obviously geographic things that help determine, you know, rivers and roads and natural places where people would flow to a central library. Can you switch back to the other again, please? Thank you. Trying to just open up that PowerPoint again. I don't know what happened here. Can you just go to the third, the third slide for me there and just highlight it? Thank you. This is also contained in your packets, but I just wanted to display this for the audience. So, within our, within our distribution formula that I've just discussed, the total estimated first-year revenue for Oregon City is 1.65 million dollars, and that is, that's highlighted here in this, and you can kind of use that as a comparison to look at the other cities in terms of, you know, how much money is being distributed. I will tell you that, you know, obviously, this is quite a jump from our current level of funding. It's about two and a half times the current revenue that we're receiving from the county for the library operations, so that's, that's very significant. Jumping ahead to section 2, the highlights in that section are, all of the funds received by the cities must be utilized for library services. The city commits to striving to achieve the OLA, that's again, that's Oregon Library Association, the threshold standards, as defined in Attachment C, so that's spelled out in detail. The rate of the district, which is 39 cents per thousand, was based on the cities being able to achieve this level of service, which again, is what I was talking about a minute ago, that that, that was, that was a very important piece of the voting component. The goal of the district is to work in a spirit of cooperation to accomplish these service levels in reasonable time periods. So, again, I want to emphasize, from earlier iterations of the IGA, there's a lot more flexibility built into this agreement. Each city is expected to make a good faith effort to achieve these levels, but it is understood that each library has its own unique issues and challenges and constraints, and this might vary from city to city and from library to library as to how this occurs. The main thing to understand is that we are vastly improving our library services, and we will continue to work towards complying with OLA standards. And the main points in achieving the OLA standards are basically three things: hours, staffing, and materials. And we are already well on our way to moving forward and achieving those goals. In the hours, we've already committed to increasing our per-week operations from 35 to 50, which is the minimum that we're supposed to meet. It's possible that more hours could be added in the future, depending on a number of different things. The staffing, we are in the process of ramping up our staffing proportional to those added hours. We're also in the process of hiring a full-time library director. I think, as you all know, we're in the process of actually screening applicants. We've received about 33 or 30, 33 or so applicants as of, as of today, and we're beginning that initial screening process. Looks like we've got a good number of qualified applicants there. And then, with our materials, we're incrementally increasing this budget. We're somewhat limited by our facility constraints until we have a new building to have, you know, our collection can only be so big with the building that we have. Not specified in this document, but as one of the OLA standards for threshold level that is defined is that there are some facility requirements. You're supposed to have a certain size of facility and these type of things. And as you well know, we're making, we're making strides in exploring our options. This is a priority for us to look at doing something with our library facility. This is a priority for us to look at doing something with our library facility and this is going to be an ongoing discussion. And again, that part of this is the discussion with that county contribution. Again, back to that point, that we have the largest unincorporated area, probably feel that there's some equity issue there about talking about even additional money above and beyond what the, the initial offer has been. We'll certainly be having future discussions on, on this facility issue, but that is not specified, though it's not specified in this document, that is part of the OLA standard that we're looking at. Another important point here is that the city does retain administrative control over the library, although we are working cooperatively with our, our district partners to achieve the goals of, of this. In sections three and four?
If I might.
Yes.
2.2. It, it looks like we're not very constrained in any way. I mean, it doesn't say anything about the board, a board, whether you either have one or not. I mean, it looks like that's up to the individual cities.
You mean local board?
Yeah, local board.
A local library board?
Yeah. Is that in here? That you have to have one?
Hmm, it, it may, it may be, that may be in the OLA threshold standards. Again, what we decided to put into this document were basically just those three major points that I talked about.
Yeah.
But it, it may be a component of it. Basically, every library has a library board, so that's.
I might, I might be wrong in my recollection, but I believe we currently have one at large representative, two from the county, and four from the city.
I think that's correct, yes.
Yeah. And it seems to me if we're going to have roughly half of our people coming into the county, we might want to rethink, rethink that ratio a bit, too.
That's up to the commission to.
No, I, but I'm throwing that out at this point. If we're going to have roughly half of our, our people are from actually outside the city.
The thing that I would point out with that, Commissioner Neely, is that just to reiterate again, though, that the city is the ultimate.
Well, I understand.
You are the.
Yeah. The board, but the board's an advisory board.
Sure.
It isn't, it isn't the decision-making body.
Right.
Yeah.
In sections three and four, this will be very brief, these sections mainly just address the terms and the general provisions. There are enforcement clauses included. This language, again, has been considerably softened since the last time that we discussed this with the commission. The city will work in good faith to strive to meet the OLA standards. The, the partners in the agreement will hold each other accountable. There's flexibility within the language to strive to meet these goals, but we still have some individual flexibility within our city. But there is language, if, if somebody takes it to an extreme level and doesn't, isn't appearing to be striving to meet the, the OLA standards, there is language that allows the, the district to take action.
Well, I was going to let you finish your three and four.
Do you finish with?
That's it.
My question was, as I was trying to read on 3.3 there, on section 3.3, and in section 3.4, for instance, you know, our service district, or service area really comes right up on Canby. So let's say that for some reason they want to switch to Canby and pull their funds that way, that Canby builds a newer beautiful library than us and they'd rather put their taxes there, so how, what's the language say? How easy is it to change?
Yeah. The, again, there's the.
I'm just asking, that's.
Yeah. The, there's very specific language about that exact type of scenario, and that's in 3.4, which is the next item right after that one. For, for any change that, that would be redistricting or changing of boundaries would require a two-thirds approval of that district advisory committee. So of that 13-member committee, two-thirds would have to approve that.
That's what I thought I was reading, too.
And, and so that's, that's, yeah, that's clearly specified. If there is a, there's another provision that if, if there is a decision or, if there's any, any type of movement to, to completely changing a boundary that would take all of the city's funds away, it would require a 100% vote. So the city's own, your own city can veto with one vote and override that issue. So not, not exactly what you're asking, but that's an important point as well. Just a couple of other miscellaneous items and then I'll be done. I want to, I want to mention that, again, not, not contained in this document, but it's, it's related, is that the county has pledged to continue to provide the operating funds and the administration of the library cooperative network, which is the link, the L-I-N-C-C. That is not coming from the district funds. That's, that's separated from the library district funds. And.
I would pose the question, I presume any library, any county commission board could reverse that decision.
Absolutely. It's a pledge.
Yes.
Hopefully they'll, they'll stay the course on that, though.
Yeah, they did. I mean, they did take the levy proportion and keep it going.
Right.
So I mean, that's why we're here today, but the district.
In, in conclusion, that wraps up my, my comments. I know they were kind of brief and a little bit, a little bit rapid here and there, but I, I wanted to more leave it to you to let me know what else I can clarify for you, if there are further questions. What I, what I am asking or looking for is a, a general consensus from, from you that we might move forward in bringing this back to you for consideration of formal approval. In other words, this is probably the last time to direct or to give staff guidance to go back and negotiate any changes. At this point, that would be rather challenging, I will tell you. We've, we've gone quite a ways down that road, but it is ultimately up to you to be comfortable with this agreement, to sign off on it. It requires a signature from all of the, as I said, all of, all of 13 cities and the Board of County Commissioners. It needs to be done before July 1st, that all, all of those parties need to be on board. And so each of the cities is doing essentially what we're doing right now. And so with that, I'd leave it to you for questions and also with any.
May I ask if there are any objections to Scott putting this on the city agenda, which we'll go through this again?
No, no objection, just one last question.
Okay. Quickly.
Well, I know in this document they account for if Happy Valley builds a library and, I can't remember the other one, Sandy, Hoodland?
It's Gladstone.
Gladstone and.
And Oak Lodge will be consolidating into 1%.
But how have they accounted for if there's any other additional libraries?
Exactly. That, that.
Proposed in, let's say we're, you know, we're doing this 20, 30, 20, 50 and more libraries.
That, that's a great question. There, there is specific language in here. See if I can point you to the right section.
Are we going to lose funding?
3.5.
Get it goes into the.
Section 3.5 would be the incorporation of a city within district boundaries. And basically what that's saying is, should an unincorporated area within the district choose to incorporate during the life of the district, that the advisory committee will make a recommendation to the, to the, to the district board, to board of county commissioners, on whether the, the new city would qualify as a service provider. And if so, to what extent the formula should be adjusted to allow them to have a, a portion of the funds. The district committee shall make a recommendation to the district board regarding the impact. Any proposed changes shall be addressed as an amendment to this agreement. The amendments to the agreement go back to the two-thirds, two-thirds approval of the district advisory committee.
Okay.
Okay, great. Last question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There would be nothing to preclude a city, for example, Oregon City, to, if it had the funding, to go ahead and put out a branch in Beaver Creek?
I don't believe so. I believe there's nothing that would preclude that, yeah.
But our funding wouldn't increase.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
We'll see this again.
Great, thanks.
Last review, good work on the negotiations.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the Police Department Strategic Plan.
I am freezing, is it, are you freezing?
I think we have Judy Clark and Chief Conrad here with us.
That's why I pulled my chair.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, I know. I'm.
Pull a little bit closer here, is that better?
Sure, that's good.
Okay. Tonight, the Police Department is going to talk a little bit about the strategic plan that we're developing. And strategic plan is basically a roadmap or a guideline that establishes a vision for our organization over the next three to five years. Basically, where do we want to see it going and how are we going to get there once we establish that vision? And in order to do that, the Police Department has contracted with Judy Clark, who's with Team HR. And Judy has done a lot of leadership training in the past with the Police Department and knows each member of the department intimately and has been a real friend and an asset to the Police Department over the past several months. And in keeping with that, she has agreed to be our facilitator for the strategic plan. Part of what we're trying to do is reach out to the various stakeholders in the community to help us establish that vision for the Police Department. And we met previously at a chief's advisory meeting in which there was members of the business community, the faith-based community, the school district, members from Lamont Falls Hospital were there and various other entities, and basically got their feedback on what they thought the Police Department did well, what they can improve in, and kind of try to help build that roadmap or that vision for the future as we establish our strategic plan. And tonight, Judy's going to talk to the commission and Mr. Patterson and, and Mayor Norris and try to get your input and talk a little bit about what we've already established, what we found out, and maybe just briefly, see if there's any ideas the commission might have to help us carry that through. So Judy Clark.
Okay, I'll take this one. Thanks, Mike.
Welcome.
So, thank you for having me this evening, and I'll try to keep this brief, this is on.
Okay.
Now you're on.
Now it's, you can tell. That's frightening. Okay. I stepped way back from the mic, all right. So I'd like to start by then providing feedback from the community meeting, which was on March 17th last month, and that folks expressed a lot of appreciation and gratitude for being involved in the strategic planning process for the Oregon City Police Department, and encouraged that community input was being sought out. Some of the strengths that they identified during this meeting, and I want to thank Chris to all the flip chart notes, and it was most helpful, was, and not that this is in any particular order, but described OCPD as forward-thinking, very proactive in their approach, and talked a lot about how they seen some of the training opportunities provided for the Police Department. They liked the presence in the schools, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Fiscal responsibility of the department, the relationship between fire and police, and I mean, that naturally was going to come up when we're at the, at the fire station, and so they talked about how that relationship works quite well. Liked the K-9 program and saw that that really improved not only the image of the Police Department, but the city as a whole. And they felt that the OCPD does delivery of very good customer service and has seen over time an improvement in communication with officers. They were incredibly enthused about a program that Chief Conrad is, and I don't know if you've started that yet, called Meet Your Police Program. And saw this as a great opportunity to educate, inform, partner, build relationship, do joint problem-solving with folks in the community, and a great way for the Police Department to tell its story. In that business, you don't tend to talk a lot about all the good work you do, and I think it'd be a great opportunity. When asked what they saw were the priority service needs in the community from the Police Department, here were some of the things that they talked about. A lot, of course, around traffic and gang enforcement, as well as gang prevention. There was a great deal of discussion around with the economy, the way it is, of seeing an increase in homelessness and some of the strain that would put on the communities and the resources, social service resources, the impact that would have on the Police Department. And a lot of discussion of who owns that, and really conclusion that the whole community does. So it was really wonderful to hear the discussion around truly, I mean, years ago, you don't really know anything about me, I worked with Tom Potter when he was Chief of Police with Portland in the beginning of community policing. And you should be very proud of your Police Department, they emulate, demonstrate, and really walk the talk on community policing. So those were identified as some of the priority needs, including they'd like to see officers more out of their patrol car and a continuing of improved communication. And a continued presence in the schools, and this was really talked about in terms of the SRO program. And finding that of great value. So with that, then, we talked about what do you see are the priorities, what you believe are the priorities for the Oregon City Police Department moving forward. First, they believed to accomplish the service needs, there needed to be an increase in staffing, so, and there was complete agreement on that. There was a lot of discussion around the current facility, seeing, no offense to your current facility.
Yeah, we understand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seeing this facility is inadequate for the needs of the Police Department, and again, there was complete agreement that there should be a new facility for the Oregon City Police Department. Again, with the demands in the community, they believed there were even more opportunities, and again, this was a priority moving forward, to continue partnering with various social service agencies, as well as to continue links with partnering in the community. And again, the idea of jointly owning solutions to the problems and challenges that are currently, that the city currently faces in an ongoing way. So that in a nutshell is, and this was a few-hour meeting, so I really tried to encapsulate here, but those were their priorities, service needs they identified. And so I just would like to sort of say, any questions or?
I had a couple. There was, I think there was this, there's this funding organization, Works for Contribution, that supports, I don't know if it's in the general metropolitan area or Portland area, narcotics education programs in the school and so forth. Are we, do we tap into those funds at all, or are they available to us?
You know, I'm not, I'm not aware of those funds.
It may be, it may be Portland-based, but they're, and I forget the acronym, but they in fact, they are, they fund police education programs in the schools, and so, and, and they, they look for voluntary contributions to that program.
We just.
As far as you're, because as far as you know, it's, it's something that isn't encompassed for Oregon City.
I, I've never heard of it out in this area, though, but we are involved in some areas. I met on Tuesday, excuse me, on Monday, with Susan Lear, who is with Oregon Impact, and me and her and our new school resource officer, David Edwin, sat down and talked about ways that we can bring youth awareness of alcohol to the school district at, at various levels, at middle school and the high school. And we're trying to continue to develop new ways to do that. So we are aware of the issues. The narcotics aspect, the narcotics portion of that, we, we haven't really looked at yet, but as far as alcohol, with the, the grant that we talked about the last time, that was before the commission, and with this new program with Oregon Impact, we are trying to get a handle on the alcohol issues involved with the youth.
So you're, you expect to finish the plan when?
End of this month, what is it, the 23rd, 24th, meeting with the entire Police Department for two full days of really working hard.
Good. Good to hear how the report, Doug.
One other question, you know, most of what you discussed in the, in getting the public feedback and so forth seems to have been positive. Is there anything negative that was striking that came out of those public discussions?
It had nothing to do with the Police Department. A lot of discussion around dispatch, which they, they don't know, so.
Yeah.
And, and I know that's been a challenge.
You mean 911 calls?
Yes.
Yeah. I had, I had an event like that.
Okay, so you can relate.
Yeah.
We did have a complaint about a pothole on Malala.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about the pothole, no.
And did you fill it?
I got them at every.
Appropriate agency.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
One question is if there's any input that you'd like to provide before we go into the strategic plan of what you see are priorities for the Police Department moving forward?
Well, it's not necessarily a priority, but it's really increased on our radar, or my radar is the gang issue. And it, even in my neighborhood, I'm, we're starting to see some things going on, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Others? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is a, an item that Jim has brought. Okay, next is a, an item that Jim has brought forward for discussion, his idea for a charter amendment for urban renewal bond, debt issuance.
As an introduction to what I want to chat about, I actually went online and want to pass this around. There are communities around Portland, I know Beaverton and Tigard are two of them, they're probably not the only ones, but I just, as an example to folks, printed out the Tiger Charter, which has a voting provision, not only for urban renewal financing, but for the urban renewal planning process. And I, you know, participated in various efforts before I got elected to allow folks the ability to vote on urban renewal issues, and I'm interested in carrying that forward as a, as a city commissioner as well. And I wanted to put this forth as an, as an example of what, what other cities have done, and I want to address some of the concerns that I've heard in the community regarding urban renewal, you know, public process, such as this. One, one question I was confronted with last year and this year both was that logistically would be very, very difficult, not impossible, for, you know, to have the public vote on, for example, every little project, let's say a facade grant or something like that, and I certainly agree with that. What I foresee more is something broader where we get the agreement and consent of the voters on kind of like broader policy direction. For example, on the, on the debt issuance question, if we, we wouldn't be going out to the voters to say we want approval every time someone comes in for a $10,000 or $50,000 application for a facade renovation downtown, but we could go out for a bond issuance that's like, is for a class of projects, like facade renovations downtown, and leave it to the Urban Renewal Commission to be the overs, you know, the application review body for individual grants. So, and the, you know, the folks, one of, one of the things that, that I'm, have a real concern about is that the urban renewal system does take funds from the general fund to fund urban renewal projects, and it is, the taxpayer's money, I mean, obviously, the direct taxation, those like me who actually live in the urban renewal district and pay, I pay part of my property taxes, a segment of which goes to fund urban renewal projects, but at the same score, if there were no urban renewal district, those taxes, or at least a chunk of them, would be going to the general fund to fund such things as police, which everybody would benefit from. And I am very interested in having the citizens have that right and that power to give us that general guidance, and I wanted to start, you know, sounding out the commission on this, getting your reactions to it, and yeah, there's a number of ways that this could take place if the commission were interested in putting it forward, and so I did want to start that discussion here in this work session.
Actually, I don't think we have enough information for, for that. I'm not sure actually I understand what you've given us here with Tigard, and I don't, I don't know that I see, again, compelling reasons to change the system that, that we have, if it's not broken. I mean, that's, that's what I think I need to hear.
I mean, I think, I think there is a different public sentiment in terms of how it functions and so forth, and I'm aware of that. I don't have, I don't have an issue with discussing it, but it really is something for a work session with the Urban Renewal Commission, not the city commission. So I think we, I think we, I think we want a work session with the, the full Urban Renewal Agency Commission.
What about if we hold it over to the retreat, the Urban Renewal Retreat? I think that might be a, is a bigger.
Or add to the retreat.
Well, that's a big, that's, it's Urban Renewal 101, so it's probably an opportunity to discuss the issues involved. That's okay?
Sounds good.
Well, the issue I think I have with that is that the Urban Renewal Commission really doesn't have the power to do a voter referral. This body does that, and especially a charter amendment, it would be the city commission that actually refers a charter amendment to the citizens.
Or the citizens themselves.
Right. Or the citizens themselves.
Right. But because the Urban Renewal Commission is the one that deals with the issues in the Urban Renewal Agency, I would love to see that recommendation come from them, and have it be discussed there. I think that's appropriate.
I guess the, kind of the similar analogy would be on the library district shopping, how to, you know, create if they, I mean, they, who did they talk to first, their library advisory boards and that kind of thing, so that's where I'm at, too.
Rocky?
I definitely think that's something that we need to talk about and look into. You made the comment, if it isn't broke, it might be broke.
Any objection to holding it over to the Urban Renewal Retreat?
Well, first I'd like to know, do we have one scheduled? When, when is the urban renewal? We talked about it on the commission in April, is that still on track?
We're meeting Thursday to discuss that retreat.
Is our first opportunity to get together?
What date?
Thursday.
Executive committee's meeting on Thursday.
And I wasn't on the executive committee.
No.
That consists of the mayor, the chair, the vice chair?
Mm-hmm.
That, those three?
The three, yeah, and we're, we're talking about.
We're just looking at dates and kind of a.
Dates, and then we'll talk about format and issues to talk about, and.
Just so we can get it organized.
And the agenda to your next meeting, hopefully. Okay, ready to move on? City commission goals and objectives.
You have a copy at your place of those, should, if we haven't given those away, if not, I'll round the ones up outside.
I had one. Thank you, Rocky.
You're welcome.
As soon as you do that, I'll find it.
Does everyone have one? Have the copies?
How does that feel, smarter than this one?
Where was it originally? Do you have yours?
Does anyone need one?
Okay, as we work through these, I think maybe an option tonight is to suggest changes, and I have one in goal number one, the objectives. I don't see any way that this year we're going to create a division of sustainability and hire a director and office assistant, so I would like to strike those and have one, one and one A.
Like all of one.
Yeah, and then have the objective number one be, continue to reduce the carbon footprint of the city's facilities, and then all of the, because that's what we're doing, but we're not doing it through an office of sustainability, which I don't, again, see us, see us doing, where we've got such a full plate, but I don't want to back away from those important initiatives. And then the other objection, the other thing that I would like to put in, on B, what's that make, S1, actually, I guess it's C, 2C on the original, is begin the multi-year program to change the city fleet to more fuel-efficient vehicles, including electric vehicles, because the county guru is Alyssa Gertler, and that she just talked to me today, actually, about whether we wanted to work on either another charging station or any electric vehicles for our fleet. So, you know, if the stimulus money is there, and we're interested in doing it, it's an opportunity, so.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with including that, but.
We don't have to either, but.
I don't, it's part of it. I mean, we don't even know how much our current thing is used and so forth, but I guess you're thinking if they build them, they will plug in, but I, I don't know if there's that much to plug into yet.
Well, we have one charging station.
No, I know.
Yeah, and the county made.
And the cars are plugging into.
Oh, oh, right, yeah, we don't know that. No, I think there's a lot we don't know, but I just.
I'm not sure we need to say that, I mean, it's sort of.
We don't need to, no, we don't need to, but I did want to bring it up. Daphne?
Well, you could maybe change it to explore, but it sounded to me from that email that, from the counties, that there might be some money available, so anytime.
Well, they're trying to batch the requests, so they're hoping that lots of cities will want to go in and buy electric cars, because then they can buy, purchase them together and work on a network of charging stations.
And you're talking about city fleet.
I'm talking about city, yeah, absolutely. And there's a, the county is working in multiple ways to try to batch things, so that we can get more bang for the buck, I guess. But no, I don't have any problem reading it off, but I needed to mention it. Is there any problem with changing that, with the change that I suggested in number one? I mean, I hate to do that, but I just don't see that. I think it's unrealistic to put it down, and so I think it should be realistic. Okay, any other changes on number, goal number one? Any changes on goal number two? And you have the commission meeting as well, too. Goal number two, actually, I have another change, on the, under number five.
Number five under two?
Uh, number two, yes, number five under number two. Okay, I changed mine, so I'm going to see what it says. Uh, number C, I would change that to, I would change that to support efforts to reopen and sustain CHP facilities, and then I would put, well, we have a C now underneath that, so it becomes one or something, which is ask CHP to provide the comprehensive report to the city commission, and then, any problems with that? And then I have a number two under that, so one is ask CHP, which is, are we on there? And then number two, it's, it's an area, it's something that we've talked about, so maybe it's explore planning for the area around the Museum of the Oregon Territory. It's an area that's not master planned in the city, so.
Can I hold on, what was your change on C, or was there one?
Yeah, C, I just changed the wording.
What was it?
Support efforts to reopen and sustain CHP facilities, and then underneath that.
I would just say, I'd rephrase that to, to open and specify the facilities rather than CHP facilities.
Oh, okay.
And actually specify the facilities that we're talking about.
Sure, that's great. Moot, EOTSC, and Stevens Crawford.
I, I have a comment on that, I think I would be concerned about sequence, in that before any city funds are expended to try to keep anything open, these reports, we need to make a decision based on knowledge, and the status of facilities, finances, and direction must be.
That was my intention.
Must be a prerequisite to any financial assistance on the part of this commission.
Sure, that's fine. As, okay, what about after direction as a prerequisite for financial assistance? It just says support efforts, so, you know, but that's okay, I don't mind that. Anyone else? Okay?
That's fine.
Okay. And then, that's all the changes I had, does anyone else have any? Oh, yes, no, I have another one. So any, any other changes on three? I went through and I was trying.
On three?
Goal three.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we have to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rocky, you have one?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Are you on three or are you on two?
It's five, right? Are we on?
No, we're on goal three, address critical facility needs.
Goal three, right?
Yes.
Okay. Appoint and convene task four. I don't think we need to appoint a task four, but we do need a task.
Oh, it's my spelling. It's 3A, we'll correct that.
And is it, I want to make sure that we understand, I think, I hope we understand, that these are not necessary in order of priorities, are they?
No.
Yeah, and should be.
They're not.
Well, and whether they should be is a good question, but the thing is that might take quite a discussion in its own right. As long as we understand these are not in the, in order priority.
No. And we can certainly.
Well, not in, in subcategories or in.
Right, and I think that if we wish to pull out, like, goal three to address sometime, and we wish to prioritize it at that time, that would be good to do, but tonight I'd like, so let's just have it be comprehensive, because we spent so much time, I'd like to get them adopted, and then we can hopefully refine them. Daphne?
Well, I was going to say, Rocky, that I feel like we work on all these things, you know, at the same time, so we're working in many ways, and, but be happy if something came up to change.
More on that?
We got, yeah, just on the library there, the next one. Refine program for site acquisition, do we have one really?
Well, we had an initial proposal, and so I think that's what it was referring to, so we could, yeah, Larry, it suggested one, but it's, what about develop then?
Yeah, I would say develop.
Okay, develop?
Yes.
Okay?
Probably you need to add to their funding as well.
Oh, just small things.
They did only identify funding for, sure.
Yeah.
Like be refined.
I just thought that was understood.
Funding, construction operations, what are the operations we've got?
You know, I edited mine.
Well, we don't need the operations.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's just mine, yeah, sorry, that's how I work. I use the red.
We'll put funding in place of operations on that.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what I meant, when I put operations down there, when I was putting our things together. Daphne?
Is there anything on number five with the swimming pool, any chance of a third-party operator on that with the YMCA or anything?
Well, the financing program could include that.
Might be.
So when we discuss it, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that excludes it, so I think that's how you need to look, you know, does it exclude anything that you want to see happen? Okay, and goal number four, number one, I added for myself, I'm suggesting that we add C, one C, complete code update, because we're doing it, and it's on the priority list, so. And they, and I think it, I think that affects the livability, the things we talked about tonight with the planning commission, I think, are direct affecting. Rocky, sorry. Did I move too fast?
No, I'm just, are we on goal?
We are on goal four.
Goal four, I have something for goal three.
Okay.
Facilities needs.
Yes.
I'd like to see, I'm sorry.
Mike? With your froggy voice, we need you to be Mike.
I know, I'm sorry. With the presentation and the process of the police department's facility, or plan, strategic plan, we've listed all the individual sites, facilities separately. I'd like to see the police department, its own category, not in with city hall.
Okay, how about if we move that as number two then, and then?
And then some mention to the, the remodel might be part of that, but the strategic plan may be including something like a whole new facility, from what we've heard, so, something relating to supporting the findings of the strategic plan, or supporting the strategic plan.
Yeah, what about support?
Completing.
What about support the strategic plan, which assumes it's completed?
Right.
Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Good catch. All right, and then number four, okay, any questions about number four? Goal number five, what did I do? Oh, I did, I did bump number one down to number four, so I guess I was suggesting a reprioritization of it, because I thought encourage volunteerism maybe was the most important thing there, but we're not really in, we don't have to prioritize, but I did do that, so, is that okay? Yes, sir. Quickly.
Excuse me, I've, I've addressed this body twice before about this issue, and I want to just one last time, because now we're doing it. What I wanted to make the point was organizing the volunteer recognition event is not what I had in mind when I want to encourage this. What I want to encourage is a volunteer coordinator, and I'm thinking perhaps the CIC, Lea's own personnel can, can undertake those methods, but what we need to do is encourage volunteerism by going out and finding out who wants to volunteer, finding out where they can plug in, somebody coordinating. I have heard so many people saying, I would like to help the city, but I don't know how, and I've spoken with Nancy Book, and she says, you know, there's this. so many things, we don't have a way of coordinating volunteers and preventing them from burning out. And I'm not talking about throwing a party, I'm talking about actively recruiting volunteers and doing what we can to keep.
Yeah, it's different. Okay, interested in putting in explorer.
Explorer, volunteer.
Volunteer coordinating position.
And, no, explorer, I was gonna say, funding opportunities. Maybe, you know, if Clackamas Fire gets a $500,000 grant for volunteer, maybe there's some things there, but I don't know, Staff Time does that, or how we do that, and.
Okay, explorer funding for a volunteer coordinator, is that it? Got me to your expectations?
Okay.
All right, got that. Um, that's the changes I had. Any other changes on this?
Okay, no.
Um, I'm going to sound out Commissioner Neely on this, on goal five, number three C. He had discussed CIC liaison as an ombudsman. I don't see that word here. I would like it in, and I would, I would like not just to consider it, but have it be one of the goals, and just say expand role of CICA liaison to coordinate city committees, receive citizen complaint, and act, act as an ombudsman.
Yes.
I think I'm interested in considering it. I would like to talk about that, whether that's exactly what we want and how it would work, and I'm not sure I'm ready to expand without considering.
Maybe it's exploring other models of communities of how they would develop an ombudsman. I'm not opposed to it either, but I'd like to hear how some other communities, how they do it.
I have, I have no problem in, in seeing how other communities do it. However, I, I mean, I've said it before, I, I think things get channeled through the city manager, and I think very frequently the citizens feel that they haven't got the hearing on their points, that they felt that they needed to have. And I, you gotta look for the right personality. It's not a person that's gonna be confrontation with the city manager, but it has to be an independent position from my standpoint.
I agree.
Independent position from, from what?
It's, it's a, is somebody.
Or who funds it, or?
It's, it's, it's under the, it's under the city commission budget. It's not under the management's budget.
Yeah, that's one I'd like to explore. I'd like to understand how that works and who it reports to, and.
Yeah, I'd like to see some other.
But the purpose. Can we just explore, or?
I think, I think the answer here is pretty straightforward. If you want a position that acts as a direct employee of the city council to go out and do whatever it is that I'm not doing, then I think that person reports to the city council. Because what you're talking about is not really the role of staff. It is the role of you as an elected official to interact with citizens. You don't need a staff person to do that. That's your job. And here, if you want a staff person to do it, you can pay that, and because, basically what you're talking about, staff report to the city commission to do whatever it is that you're not doing. I mean, in a lot of ways, it's a needless expenditure if you're really out in the community interacting with citizens. But if you feel you need a staff person to do that, that you don't want to go back through staff, because if it's a staff position, reporting to the city manager, you're still gonna run into the same problem, whatever it is you think that you have now. And I would venture to guess, you don't really have that filter you're talking about, because I have not seen a meeting yet that citizens don't, I mean, we've had some pretty interesting lively discussions here. I don't think citizens' viewpoints are getting quashed, but if you feel that way, you know, I think either you're failing in your elected role, or you need to have some other process. But that's.
I, I would argue that as volunteers, I don't know that we're failing in our elected role, when our time is limited with, with other professional duties and other activities. So, I, I don't think that's a fair assessment at all. I mean, we could, we could try as individuals to attend every neighborhood association meeting, and going to every CIC meeting and so forth. We all have time commitments, and in fact, it's not the same thing. I mean, we call ourselves a city commission, but we're not. We're a city council. I mean, we, we don't function that way. We are a volunteer group.
But you're still the representative of the citizen. If they have an issue, that's who they need to talk with, as opposed to that building. Because even if you have a person that is directly reporting to you, that person is an individual that's gonna filter it somewhat. So, if there, if you feel there's a filter, there is no way you can do that to another person. That's something you're gonna have to do directly with the citizens you represent. And I know that's difficult with the time commitments you have. But it's, you know, that's a challenge every elected official faces, be they part-time or be they full-time, because you've got 30,000 citizens out there that have lots of different viewpoints, and many of those are at conflict with one another, so.
Well, in order, in order for unanimity and explore the position of an ombudsman, we can put that in there, but then I want to see what other cities do.
Okay, explore position of ombudsman.
Well, consider expanding CIC liaison to coordinate city committees and receive citizen complaints. And I would say and act as an ombudsman. I don't know what the problem with that is, actually. See, receive, receive city complaints, and what do they do with it? Well, right now, they do, they take it to the city manager. I think we, I think we have.
You don't get citizen complaints? My box is filled.
I get them.
I get them.
Daily.
Yeah, we get citizen complaints, but I, I feel that there's gotta be a different mechanism that one would use. I know that, I know when the discussion went on in the CIC, I had various complaints from the members attending that particular meeting about how that was performed. They, they frankly felt that, that it almost came under the control of the city, of the city manager. And I went to that first meeting, I kept quiet during it, but I felt that was true.
Well, let's put it down as an opportunity to explore further. I.
Explore, be as.
Explore the expanding role of CIC, and then we have a comma, and act as ombudsman.
As an ombudsman.
I'm not sure where the two Ss is.
Well, so does that mean the CIC is limited to acting as an ombudsman?
No, that's a person.
No, 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 it's just, it's something we can work through.
The question is gonna be, is what does the ombudsman's role is in resolving a complaint?
Yeah.
Do they, do they work it individually, or do they go back through the departments to work it?
Do they, do they?
Do they go into the commission, and the commission directs?
Yes.
I don't know if it's the commission, if in fact, they figure there's a loggerhead.
Well, they can anyway, though.
They do anyway.
Who, we, who, who does?
I get, I, I, people bring us comments, and if people are having problems, I mean, they call me, and I will call Larry, and staff deals with it. You know, there, at one of the city dinners, we heard a, was it the complaints hotline? What was it called? That several cities use, that, to help manage the citizen input. And it's pretty interesting, because some of the issues, I think, are tracking issues. What was that? Do you know what that was called?
I don't recall.
311.
Yeah, there's something.
But I don't, you know, I think you don't have a very good appreciation of the number of citizen complaints we handle in a given day. What you hear is the ones who tend to be unhappy with the answer, and I got one, I could lay on you this evening, another flooding issue. That, it could come to you through such a case, you have one or two choices. You can pay it, and when you do, you're gonna pay probably 10 others, and you're gonna make that citizen happy, but you're probably not gonna serve the rest of the citizens who, there's a real question, well, that's the city's issue to do. You know, those are the type of things that rise up to the commission. We had the gentleman with the sewer out.
Yeah.
I mean, those are things, they get to you because there's really, within the parameters we have to act. We can't solve their issue. You've heard a lot from Laurel Lane, you'll probably hear some more on that. We're really engaged out there trying to solve that issue. But if you feel you need this position, again, you're gonna have to define how it works, who it is, and how that responds to you. But I don't think it's necessarily gonna solve whatever issue you're, you're shooting at in some cases.
Well, it's on here as an issue to explore, so.
We can bring that back.
Um, any other changes, Rocky?
I want to go back to goal number two, 5D.
Okay, the tax credit.
Yeah. I got a call from staff, kinda asking me what, what the tax credit idea referred to, and I said, I don't really know. I mean, it was something that Commissioner Seda brought up, and I couldn't fully remember that discussion. I'm, I'm kinda wondering if 5D is a little too specific.
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it needs to just basically say, explore means to refurbish their Matinger House, and that, that might be a piece that's underneath that. But I think there's, I think that's too specific, and I'm not really sure what that.
Agreed.
Means.
Specifically means, and so I think.
I like.
To have all.
I agree.
Means open to look into.
So, it now says explore means for refurbishing blah, blah, blah. Okay?
Which, which word?
5D.
Goal two.
5D. Explore the means for refurbishing our Matinger House.
Goal two.
Goal two. Number five, it says continue efforts to support.
Oh, this page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, if that's the changes, then, um, I sort of hesitate to go through the other list of city priorities tonight. How shall we do that? I know that we moved some up, we changed some around.
I don't know if that is, I, I think you just need to look at that in terms of kinda what we're working on, and you might, as we look at these things, you might factor back in the kinda how these are, and if there's things that seem to be falling by the wayside, we're not getting done, then you might wanna, at that time, say, well, let's not do this, this, and this, and move this up to her. Because this is kinda what we're working today.
Yeah, I would suggest that, yes, when you look these over before we adopt them, that, you know, if you want, strike some, move some up, move from one to the other, or, especially if we're missing anything. Rocky?
And if we reworded it in the goals, it need to be reworded in these columns.
Could be, yeah.
Number 12 in column two.
Oh, right, okay. I will check, I will check that, too, if I'm doing just.
Number 16? Yeah.
Yeah, and number 16 would be, need to be done. Okay. All right, is that good enough? I'll take a chance at kind of rewording those and reordering, and then we'll bring them and talk about them and adopt them at the next meeting. How about?
Okay, we need, agenda goes out on Friday.
Can you get me out of my metro meetings for the next few days?
She can scan. She can scan.
I can do those, I can do those quickly. Okay, keep me, keep on me on that. All right, stimulus, we were eager to hear about that. Nancy?
Hi.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
That's okay. Well, I'm not exactly sure what all you guys wanted to learn about, but one of the things that I heard you saying was that you were kind of wondering about what all the lists we had.
Yes.
For stimulus. So, I'm gonna pass out the three lists that I have, and these were, some of them were, were very much in the prepared when the first buzz of stimulus hummed on my computer. And the first thing they asked us to do was, as a public works agency, what are your needs, particularly those that are unfunded? Could you give it, could you put together a list? What, if you had money, what could you do with it? So, the list on the bottom is one that I prepared, more as an internal list, which I gave to Larry, so he could kind of understand.
List on which, which page are you on?
One on the bottom, the third page.
Okay, third page.
Yeah, you like it when I start at the bottom instead of the.
Well, that's.
It's not the bottom, it's the back.
I read magazines backwards, too.
Is that an engineering technique?
Do you do that?
No, I don't read last pages of my novels.
No, the magazines. But, so, the first thought was, if you, if, if, if this economic stimulus package comes to fruition, what are your needs? What's unfunded? What could you, what could you use money for? So, we put together a whole long, long list of things that would fall into many, many categories, depending on, gosh, if we had transportation money, what could we do this? Waste water, don't forget stormwater, let's do water, let's do parks, let's do, as, as many things as you could possibly think of pedestrian, because that's a, you know, very important issue these days. So, that is a long list. It's over $100 million worth of work. And isn't that exciting, that we have that much work to do?
Or discouraging, depending on your point of view.
Just let me ask a quick question first. In terms of anything that's public works related, are these all on our list of things that also appear in our SDC piece?
The only thing that I see on here that doesn't is two trolleys. We kind of put that on there, thinking that, gosh, you know, if we had the opportunity to get more trolleys, it would enable us to expand our service more if needed. But other than that, I think that everything is in one of our master plans, including the, under other, I covered Scott's Glen Oak Road Park. So, yeah.
The unnamed Glen Oak Road Park.
Yeah. So, that, that's the first list we came up with, and that was just, like I said, pretty much for internal, and, and it was sent out to some public works organizations.
But it, it didn't go out, this all didn't go out as a request for?
Not within the state, no. And then shortly thereafter, and now we can go to the top sheet, I definitely did these inside out.
So, this is the front sheet?
Yeah, the front sheet.
The first page of the novel.
That was our confusion.
I want to have some challenge for your minds at this time, and I, that was the metro list, and I think Larry, yes, sir?
Nancy, it's first, I think it says first list. There was one that got somewhere, because that's one that's been sent all over the web.
Oh, that was our.
That's the one I saw.
That's the one we all got.
That's the National LLC.
Yes, the National League of Oregon Cities.
Oregon City got listed.
National League of Cities.
And that doesn't include all of these projects. What they had was particular categories that you could put projects into. They had transit, they had transportation, bridge, I can't remember.
Pedestrian.
But it did not have as many projects.
That's where I saw, that's where I saw the trolleys in the trolley barn.
Yes.
Yeah, the trolley barn. Because we need a place to store the trolleys.
I understand, but I, I, I mean, I guess, I guess, I guess what I took, got taken back by is to see this thing on the web.
Yeah.
Well, you.
And we were not, we were not advised at all that this was going out.
This was, they were doing surveys. I mean, this wasn't like, you know, are you applying for this money? They were surveying public works directors, city managers, the manager got all these, all two in terms of.
And we had like about a two and three-day term.
Yeah. However, just so you understand, I meant, just bouncing off of what Doug said.
This was a citizen complaint I got. They sent it to me.
Well, I, I had, I fielded several calls. I fielded several grocery store, you know, meetings, like I do all the time.
Oh, in the produce section.
And I said, you know, are we funding a trolley? Absolutely not. We don't have a trolley. We don't even talk about the trolley barn. And so, then they show me this, and makes me look like I'm a liar. So, anyway, that, that was just the position I think we're putting.
This is like, I think you, you set yourself for opportunities that might come down the pike, and.
Yeah, I understand that now.
It wasn't like the city commission is doing this. This was staff surveys.
And I realize they were coming after you very quickly.
Yeah, professional surveys. And I think what you have to keep in mind is we're doing our best to, to keep our, keep our tabs on what opportunities there are, and to be honest with you, we need a place to store the trolleys. Right now, we're leasing part of the armory, and so.
I had a citizen call, too, and she was, had seen that list and was upset, and I explained to her, kinda what the process we went through, as well as I also explained to her the issue of downtown parking, and that there could be a connection of the fact that, that there may be a shuttle service. And I said, we don't really expect to get this, but they ask, and we throw these things in there, and, you know, if it happens, and she was, she was satisfied with that. She started, she was angry, but when she heard the explanation, she said, oh, okay. Because they don't understand all the moving parts we've got going on. So, yeah, it's, but the first days when they were talking about stimulus is the confusion over the email and the phone calls and the request for information, and so everything we had on the list, we were saying, okay, you know, you're gonna hand out money. Oregon City has lots of needs.
We want to be first in line.
Yeah.
I guess what I would say, maybe next time, and we'll probably never be in this place ever again, so it's probably totally irrelevant, you might CC all of us on that, maybe?
It was through the web. It was straight through the web.
Yeah, no, no, I completely understand that.
Yeah, it was. And then we were asked, Larry and I were asked to prepare a list for Metro. Metro asked for a list from Oregon City, and that's the one on the top sheet. And that we trimmed considerably, and I think Mayor, I don't remember who all looked at this list, but anyway, we had road projects, pedestrian, wastewater, parks, tourism development, and library. And those were projects that, again, they were kind of, some that I was, were very familiar with, and some that are more pipe dreams, but still, ones we thought we should put on the list.
Now, for clarification purposes, are these all things that Metro would make decisions on? For example, they wouldn't even, would they be even involved in allocation of library money?
Larry, you were kind of, I think you got this request first, and then we took some of these ideas and put them together in this spreadsheet. So, do you recall what they're in? Goal list?
I don't.
I think, I think they were, as I recall, they were hoping to be an advocate for everything. I mean, I think each agency sort of said that, we hope to advocate for you, with you.
Yeah.
Yep, it's kind of what I remember.
I guess my, I mean, the only, the only stimulus monies that I know of, and I hope I'm correct, is the, is the Warner Millney Beaver Creek intersection. I can call it that now, can't I? Okay, that, that intersection.
And the Promenade.
Promenade.
And the Promenade, that's a different, but, but, that three intersection thing, just it's, it's really that single intersection, right? In terms of what you're.
Well, what the, that, that particular project.
The two intersection.
Is the realignment of the intersection with Warner Millney and Molalla Road, as you know, and how it's offset.
And then that other one.
Realign it, no, it doesn't include the Beaver Creek Road intersection. And then it also includes water replacement, sewer replacement, a storm drainage, rain garden out here, and paving from Molalla down to Beaver Creek Road on Warner Millney. So it's, the stimulus funds will not cover any utility work, but, you know, we, again, we try to put together a project that's pretty complex and we'll hire a lot of different sorts of people and use a lot of different materials and be good for the economy.
And Nancy, there's a little, little glitch in that in terms of timeframe, we got to get this thing ready to go that we didn't know?
Oh, yeah, originally when we got awarded the money, we had to have the whole bid package ready to go December, in December. And then after we got the McLaughlin Promenade money, they told us we had to have it ready to go in June.
So we're hustling on that one.
Don't we also have a paving project on 213 Redland area?
That's not ours, that's ODOT's.
Okay, but it affects us.
You could say that.
You may, you may recall an old skit when it comes to the stimulus package, it's apropos and that's Laurel and Hardy, who's on first, because that's kind of what we've been going through here.
But I wanted to let you know that we have, okay, so then we have the middle page.
Let me, let me be on the first page just for a second. These stimulus monies are stimulus monies that are coming from the state or through the state, well, they're coming from the state because the state approves them. Are these federal stimulate, stimulus package monies or are they part of the state budget?
These are federal stimulus dollars that are part of the Oregon State's allocation based on our per capita.
We also have projects that could possibly come through Metro to us or not?
That is the local government, um, allocation. So the state receives money, part of it is directly goes to local governments and counties through your MPO, so it's through Metro. Then there are the small cities that got small amounts directly to them, still it's state money. And then the state had their $230 million, which the state has full authority to select projects for.
And these two came out of the latter?
No, this prod, the Warner Millney intersection project came out of our local share of the state money that went through our MPO Metro in Glackamas County. And then the McLaughlin Promenade is out of the state's share. So the state is sharing their money with local agencies, counties, anybody who needed.
Does Metro have the ability of the things that are coming through it, that monies are going to Metro that they can allocate themselves or is it all allocated by the state?
Metro had to approve the allocation because that's the way we do it at Metro.
J-PAC.
J-PAC had to approve the allocation of the local monies. The state had nothing to do with it. The local, we got, I think there was about $39 million of the state allocation went directly to local, to the Metro, local counties and cities. And we decided how we wanted to spend that money, the state stayed out of it.
So that intersection was approved by Metro, it allocated that?
Yes.
Okay.
And the county and we all agreed to, you know, we did our J-PAC group hug and it was $900,000 that we got.
And the Promenade was direct, it was direct from the state to us?
Yes, that's correct.
But I just wanted to understand what was going on. And are there any of these other projects potentially that could come through Metro that would be approved?
Well, that's what we're looking at right now, because what we're finding is that many of the projects that were selected may not be able to meet the deadlines. These are tough deadlines for, for some communities to meet. And, um, if we hadn't been so prepared and sort of getting, thinking ahead and getting projects ready and then we, plus we have a project manager who's just relentless about paying attention to all these details, plus we have a very good consultant working on this stuff to help us meet the deadlines. But for those that fall off, if any of that money becomes available, we will go through another selection process. And that's something that Metro is soliciting ideas for now. The most obvious idea is to backfill projects that weren't fully funded with the first allocation, like our project out here, the transportation improvements are actually $1.2 million and we're getting $900,000. So you could up it, you know, you could take $300,000 of additional funds and put it towards that. The other idea, we, and this is something we're talking about, the counties, the technical advisory committees and the C4 groups are supposed to provide Metro with some recommendations on how to handle if we get, if we don't get more money, but if we don't use all our money. And so one of the ideas that I floated with the C4 TAC is perhaps some sidewalk replacement on Main Street or particularly ADA ramps where we don't have ADA improvements, because that's a project where there, no matter what, you have to go through some sort of NEPA process. And if there's any kind of NEPA process that's going to require, um, complex biological assessments, environmental assessments, right-of-way acquisition that can take six months, nine months, 12 months, et cetera, you can't make these deadlines. So you have to find a project that basically it's like a pavement project or it's one of ours where we had all the right-of-way all lined up that, you know, can fit into that little box.
When they say shovel-ready, they mean shovel-ready?
They sure do, yeah.
They want results. And as you saw in the paper yesterday, I think it was, the employment numbers don't seem to be coming in quite as much as they were hoping for the state.
Not yet, but, but you know, they haven't let, many of the bits haven't been let, and I think personally, I think it's just as important to keep jobs, because I mean, I talk to contractors all the time and architects and engineers that are just, people are getting laid off all over the place. So the other two, the two other projects that we have applied for that have to do with the states, this is the Department of Environmental Quality Clean Water Revolving Fund. One is we've applied for money to do the rain garden here at the intersection project. And then the other project that we just submitted today, because it's, again, it's a really tight timeline for applications, is for our wetland, our Upper Newell Creek Basin Wetlands Restoration and Redsoil's Path.
Right there.
The beginning of them.
Yeah, and so that one, you know, this, and that is a 50% grant, 50, it's basically, you still have to come, come up with 50% of the funds. Both of those projects are partially funded in our budget right now, so I thought they'd be good, if we get the money, great. If we don't, well, you know, we, we won't do the wetlands, we'll fight, we'll do it another day. So, and that, so that's pretty much every, oh, and then of course the jug handle. If the ODOT share, their $230 million, if they start falling short, we want to keep some large projects ready to go, totally shovel-ready to fill that gap. And the other thing that could happen is if any of the state, other states don't spend their money, their allocated money, then it goes into the pool and we might end up getting money from the rest of the, can't imagine that happening.
Let's hope certain of those states that said they will refuse it, go ahead and refuse it.
So nice to get that jug handle money.
So, um, so for that reason, we continue.
We'll wait and see if any of them really. I know.
Yeah, we continue to prepare for that and then also the other thing with the jug handle, of course, is that ODOT is getting more and more interested in that project and if they've taken care of some of their backlog of paving projects in their next state transportation improvement program, they might, they would, there's a good chance they'd start looking at the jug handle for a project because it's ready to go. So we, we, you know, we, we think there's, uh, we think our energy is being well spent at this point.
And it's lots of energy.
And then the other thing came across my desk today was the fleet. If we want to go into a statewide fleet program, uh, electric vehicle fleet program with the counties and the state and the more counties you get, the more chance you have of getting more money and this is not, so that's something we all probably need to talk about, because there's a lot of places where you could imagine putting in EV stations to serve the public.
Doug?
From my standpoint, because at various points, the trolleys have become hot button issues as you are aware of your time.
I don't remember any.
I'd like to really have us come, not with a detailed view, but with a, a concept of how these trolleys would operate. I mean, largely they're, to a large extent, they're functioning in a kind of a tourist capacity and so forth, but does it fit into some kind of a transportation system plan that isn't likely to be addressed by TriMet, but we know we have needs and start talking about that, something broader than just.
I'm with you.
I like it.
Just dealing with the tourist part of it, you know, and, and I'm sure there are those needs and we need at one point, I don't think it's on goals, but maybe something will be set up for next year even, so to actually start talking about that piece.
Well, we're doing the transportation system plan and I'm wondering if the trolleys could be a part of your update.
They could, certainly they're part of the.
Broader by my, if we can call it public transportation as opposed to trolleys per se.
Set of tourism. That would be part of the transportation.
Yeah, we can do that, but let me give, let me just give you a couple of concepts and again, we're a way off, but I think you have to look long-term at what the cities need to are and, and it's, it's, it's probably threefold what the goals are here. I mean, we've heard a lot, and you spent a lot of time this evening talking about planning issues. And if you're going to reduce the reliance on the automobile, particularly as it for in-town, you got to provide some type of alternative. So we're going to, at some point, we need to talk about some type of local transit system that's beyond just these few TriMet routes that they run up that are inconsistent at best. I mean, not only are they cancerous routes, but every time the weather gets bad and people need them the worst, it's for some reason they can't get up the hill, which doesn't make any sense.
They couldn't get up there. I, I, really, I saw them and they couldn't get up.
But it may be, it may be the type of vehicle that's being ran as well. I mean, somehow you still have to provide a need. We had one fellow who walked in the middle of storm, walked from the, from the transfer station up here to pay a ticket and of course court was closed. So then he had to turn around and go back down the hill and he was soaking wet when he got here. That's one issue. That also ties in if, if we are talking long-term about extending light rail into Oregon City, once they get here, how do they get around town? So I think again, we have to build towards that development. The short-term though, which the trolley is already doing, if you're going to grow downtown and we've got a big effort going towards Main Street, we have to solve the parking issue. The real solution in any short-term situation is some type of shuttle system, because you cannot put all the parking you need to have a successful downtown into that core. It's a question of who walks, you're going to have to move the court system out and if you're going to do that, you have to provide them a way to get downtown. The trolleys can serve that and they can do that now and we got to figure out how to fund them. That's where we're going with this stuff.
And also the Seventh Street corridor itself. I mean, we, we got, we got the buses going up Ninth and.
Then.
Yep.
On seven.
But if, and if you, and if you provide that type of service and you do it in a way that also adds an attraction to the city, you've killed two birds with one stone. And that's where your trolleys, I think, do, and, and to me, that's, that's such an easy vision. I, I've never understood in this town why the trolleys are so controversial, other than just the political divide between groups, because it makes no sense to argue that what we need to do, given those needs I just outlined, is just a question of how we get there.
But I'd love to see that in the TSP, you know, with advisors working on it.
It was sort of in a TSP at one time and got jerked by one of the commissioners.
I wonder, I know the name.
It's not me.
The initials.
That's all right, I jerked, I jerked something too.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Do you have more?
Just the, the middle page.
Okay. Getting to the middle.
This is the fan print.
The meat, this is the meat.
Actually, this is very similar to the Metro page, but this one was what we were working with, with the state, the League of Oregon Cities. They wanted our list so that they could be aware of what, what the needs are for the various communities in the state. So that was what we submitted to the LLC. And in the, in the meantime, some of the numbers changed during there and, you know, we did our best to try to stay in front and so we could be, be candidates for.
Well, as far as I can tell, it's really important to be on top of the projects and to have lists like this.
Absolutely, because there are, there was a fellow from one of the counties and public works director and he was just saying how, and actually they, it's not a little county, but he was just saying that they don't have the staff to get the projects ready and to get, keep it going and I, you know, it's taken, it's taken a lot of work to do this. In fact, we're using Laura Butler from planning to help manage the McLaughlin Promenade project because, because she had some available time. And so, you know, it's a great way to keep people, you know, do, it takes that, it takes a lot of people to keep these things moving and meet the deadlines.
Good, thank you. Other questions on the stimulus? Thank you very much.
Just, just one other comment to all this stuff is, we have been one of the more organized cities in terms of having our requests.
I keep hearing, I keep hearing that.
And I thank you and I also thank Nancy and I also, I also appreciate some of the tremendous staff you have working in the Urber Newell District and so forth. They do a great job.
Thank you, thank you. Try and get more money.
There's dollars to hand out, we're going to go after them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have anything more?
I do not.
Okay, I have a couple of things that I just have to throw out, because I, I vote committees and I don't have guidance on a couple of things. I don't want to speak for myself again. I've been at two meetings actually on the construction excise tax and today was a stakeholder meeting that Michael, that Metro Council has called together. So it's the home builders and it's the realtors and it's, um, school districts and it's as diverse as possibly can be. The construction excise tax I have information on, if you're content, it, it is grandfathered in when the school construction tax is passed by the state. So Metro is the only jurisdiction in the state that gets to have another construction excise tax and it's, but it's going to sunset because it had a dollar amount, a ceiling, but it hit that dollar amount, which is supposed to hit, well, before it was middle, I think it's supposed to hit this fall. If it's not renewed, then it goes away. So it's, this is a task force to look at retooling possibly for infrastructure. And so you have to use it for planning, so maybe it's planning for infrastructure. So if you would like to have information on it, I have like four handouts on the tax, why it was established and if you have no problems with me advocating, I mean, we used $279,000 for the Park Place Plan, $117,000 for the Beaver Creek Plan and $279,000 is allocated for the south end, concept plan is yet to be done. So we have, we've been a major beneficiary in the region. There were 12 concept plans funded, eight completed and five yet to do or something like that, because it doesn't add up, but, but anyway, it's, it's a very important funding source. Everybody kind of agreed around the table that you didn't want to let it go and because to let it go, the state will pull that mechanism back and says the infrastructure needs are so huge. So anyway, if you want these, everybody want one? Okay, great. Pass those around, pass these around. This is the old ordinance and then this is the planning landscape that we're looking at with infrastructure.
Do you need a decision tonight?
No, I just want you to be aware of that, that I'm sitting on this committee and that if you have any questions or objections to us advocating for the continuance and reforming of it, and I'll keep.
At same level, same dollar amount?
No, it likely will be different and, and Metro Council does not want a dollar amount.
It's a little bit different.
Oh, the purpose will likely be different. We haven't gotten to purpose yet. I think there's a series of three meetings.
So my.
So, might, okay.
But I wanted to let you know that that's a possibility, if you have any objections to that continuing or anything.
No.
I have my original.
I want to be, I want to be clear about something.
Yes, about what it is.
That it's Metro that has required us to have the concept plan, which I think is a good thing, but that is correct.
Yes, yes.
And another urban growth expansion, I assume Metro would have the same expectation.
I think that's all in the reserves process, but yeah.
That's another one.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. The point is, they're going to have to make a decision a couple of years about what they're going to do for the next five again, or whatever it is.
Yes.
The point is, what will be the funding for that next concept plan after the funding, the current funding's run out? I mean, if this is for a different frequency-
It's on the table, it's on the table, all that.
This will, I mean, they'll still talk about that as potential source for that kind of concept planning.
Yes.
Because the city would be in a terrible shape if we had, I think we probably spend a lot of money on our own, anyway, but to spend it all, I think-
And we couldn't have done it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we were the poster child, we were the poster child today for the use of the funds, and so I was actually grilled on many different aspects of-
The point is, I think we need to argue that one of the purposes of that is still for concept planning.
Yes.
Not only transportation is one major component, but it's not the only component.
Yeah, no, exactly. No, we're not, no, no, it's not transportation, infrastructure. It's some of it, but also, schools are included in that, too, but it's sewer and water, and there's a lot of places that can't be, I mean, for instance, you know, many of you believe that the reason the annexations went down in the Beaver Creek and Park Place areas is that they couldn't be served by infrastructure, meaning sewer and water, and that this may help that. That's, that's what's being debated around the table, anyway. Is that, is that a greater need than concept planning, or, anyway, that's the discussion. Secondly, so let me know if you have that along the way, and I'll be giving you updates, but I didn't want your eyes to glaze over when you heard that, heard me talk about that. Okay, second-
We don't want unmandated, we don't, what is it?
Unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandates from, from Metro.
Metro.
Very good.
Exactly, okay. I'll use my marching orders. Okay, I have also been invited to an event from the, at Clackamas Community College. You may remember that last couple of years ago, Senator, now Senator Martha Schrader, who was then County Commissioner, put together and with, along with the community college, a, an event for, to help veterans and servicemen and women find resources, both for jobs and for healthcare and all kinds of other things, and we have been asked to join with other cities in making a community covenant, and that is a pledge to do things such as ensure that the, the action plan, the action would be, because I asked about it, and I don't think I made copies of the email for you, I meant to, that, for instance, on our website, could we have links to resources that military members might look at as places to go for resources? And secondly, would be to ensure that our, that veterans and military members in our community receive employment protection, and I talked to Jim about that, and I want to give you a response just quickly, because it's easy.
Sure, real briefly, you know, we're, the federal law is the U.S.A.R., Uniform Services, Employment, Reemployment Act, that we're, we are in compliance with, and we do offer veterans preference points on applications, assuming they provide their discharge papers, their DD 214. We are, we are in compliance with the law. If, we do have current police members who are on active duty or on the guard that are deployed or do deploy, and we take care of them when they come back, so we're-
Okay, so, we do do those things, so if anyone had, if you don't have objections to this, what I would do would be to look at what the commitment, I guess I'm giving you some sample of what the commitment is, and at the ceremony, which are many people involved, including the governor, I believe, and Senator Schrader, we're supposed to be pledging that we'll help our military families, and so I will, what I would like to do, though, is to get a, I have got a copy of that, send that out to you to see if you're okay with it, because it's something we've never discussed, so.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, I will do that. I just need some guidance on that. And Jim?
I have an item to bring up that I'd like to discuss. I would, if we could, I need some guidance, and I want to have a broader discussion on the various representatives, representative functions that this commission plays with Clackamas Heritage Partners, and I'm speaking both of my designation as liaison to CHP and this task force that I've been seeing some emails about today, recently, and I wanted to just get clarification on that.
Okay, the, it's not a task force, it's just a meeting, and it's involved, it involves funding, and Doug and I are going to go because they weren't able to find a meeting date that Rocky could attend, so Doug and I will be there, and it's simply to talk about, are we committed to supporting the, getting the museums open? What do we have, what hurdles should we have to overcome to release funding from the county and from the city, and how can the county and the city work together to determine that certain goals might be met? That's the agenda that I-
And the financial commitments are going to have to come through the commission.
Yeah, and then, right, and then that, whatever happens at that meeting, then it'll come back here before us, and then it's a full-blown discussion on what, where, when, why, and how.
There's, you're, you would not, you're not actually a liaison, you're a member of that board.
Well, that's, there's, there's actually two discussions here.
Yeah.
The, this discussion of this meeting and my role as board member.
Yeah.
Actually, I need clarifications on both.
Well, you're, I think you were appointed.
Well, we need to talk about that, because Clackamas Heritage Partners, I don't, they want someone as a liaison who will be supportive, so that's, I think that's the, that's the issue. So, we need-
We don't know, right, let me, I mean, the history of, the history of it was, we had a specific management agreement for the operation of the interpretive center. Then this body came into existence, Clackamas Heritage Partners, which I thought was supposed to operate in a little different way than it eventually operated, which actually took management services of the Clackamas County Museum, that is, Museum of the Oregon Territory, and also the, as you, as you know, the-
Murti Stevens House.
Murti Stevens House, as well as the-
Into the right field.
And, and since, since we owned one of those facilities, we had membership in it, that is, we had board membership in it. It's a little, it's a little difficult in terms of knowing how that's going to devolve, frankly. When you say supportive of something else, in some sense, we don't know what we're supportive of, and so, I mean, I think, I think we got to be a little bit, look at that in a retrospective way in terms of how the city ever got involved in in the first place. City got involved in the first place simply because it owned the, owned the End of the Trail Interpretive Center.
Yeah, I'm just repeating what, I don't believe that they have to have a liaison, and we've been doing that kind of as a courtesy.
No, 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 that was in the management plan, that they, we have a, we have a seat. That was in the management plan.
That's why I was asking that document later.
I'm sure that's true.
I don't know if it's still there, so.
Well, yeah, I'm sure it was, although, when you made that agreement, I wasn't on the commission, I'm pretty sure that we had, we have a seat in that body.
Wasn't it?
And it's a voting.
Yeah, it will, we'll have to look at it.
Because this, this is the discussion I need, because from the city's perspective, the taxpayers' perspective, from the commission's perspective, I'm not sure that it is in our interest to let CHP decide for us who the city is going to have represent the city on CHP.
No, they wouldn't.
They would.
They wouldn't.
No, that's an appointment by the mayor.
No, that's my appointment.
But, but I want to get clarification from you, as the mayor, whether your appointment of me is standstill, or whether you want to take a different direction as far as your appointment, and I say that for a couple of reasons. One, from what you've just intimated, and from my personal experience, and I want to shoot another email, copy around here, I, back as early as January, you know, undertook my initiative as the mayor appointee to Clackamas Heritage Partners to become involved with that board, and I've just gotten radio silence, basically, from the board of Clackamas Heritage Partners. This is an initial exchange of emails between Mr. Porter and I, which he never followed up on, after I sent him my contact information. I'm not on any email, listserv, I'm in no, you know, I get no communications from either Mr. Porter or any, anybody on the board. I was notified of the first meeting of Clackamas Heritage Partners, but not of the second, and no subsequent meeting. I've been contacted by no one regarding these fundraising efforts. You may recall the exchange at the last city commission meeting with Mr. Fowler and Mr. Danielson, where I indicated, you know, I've not been told of your meetings. Mr. Fowler made some reference to the fact that, well, we've not gotten any communication from the mayor, that you are indeed the representative, and I don't see why this email, why Mr. Porter couldn't take my word for it when I mentioned it in January. You indicated that night that, yes, indeed, you had made such a communication to the board that I was the board member from the city. Now, I, you know, I, another reason why I bring this up is, it's not a secret from various city commission meetings that I have a bit of a different view on Clackamas Heritage Partners than perhaps the majority of the board has. I see my role on CHP as a representative of the citizens of Oregon City as one of oversight. I'm one, someone who's prone to asking a lot of questions, asking for information, and I kind of frankly get the impression that there are at least certain people on the board who see me that don't want somebody who's going to be, you know, skeptical and asking a lot of questions. So, I feel like I'm kind of in this, you know, ambiguous twilight zone regarding the commitment of, you know, this commission as to whether, in fact, the commission wants me to be the liaison to the board of Clackamas Heritage Partners, and whether, you know, if I do proceed in that role, the board, this commission's comfortable with my playing at oversight role, because there are some management issues that have been discussed in the open. You know, CHP is, is, you know, wanting to reopen the museums, they're raising funds. I don't see anything going on as far as management reforms. We have a very short timeline of approximately three weeks now from their deadline, you know, they've stated publicly when they want to open. I frankly can't see how they're going to give us this accountability and report, this financial report, et cetera, in that time for us to turn around and consider it and consider whether we're going to give them $50,000. So, I really need some direction as to what the heck I'm doing, what the heck we're doing, and some definition as to how this commission wants, you know, us as a commission to interface with the Clackamas Heritage Partners Board.
Let's take, let's take that up. I need to have some discussions like that, too, so.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think there's anybody right now that's happy with what the Clackamas Heritage Progress have done.
And-
And in terms of, in terms of closing the museums.
So, that, we'll talk after the Thursday meeting. Yeah, Rocky?
I'm going to actually go through all of this because of the timeline with meeting on Thursday, and the fact that we won't meet until next Wednesday. Mr. or Commissioner Nocita brought up the question about the meeting on Thursday in multiple meetings in front of the citizens of Oregon City. I was named to be on the committee to talk about this subject. I got a phone call from the mayor on Sunday night, basically saying that the meeting could not take place any other time but 2:30 on Thursday afternoon, which of course is a problem for myself. I didn't have any other real way of addressing that time issue. I very much want to be at that meeting. I don't think the question about whether or not that meeting is going to take place on Thursday has been answered yet.
Oh, you got an email, you just-
Well, I responded to that email as well today. You haven't seen it yet. My email, I went, sent email on April 6th to county commissioners and to this commission stating my interest in at least discussing the possibility of moving that meeting on Thursday so that I could attend. Nobody responded until 4 o'clock today, with staff from the county commissioners. My phone call with the mayor led me to believe that the county commissioners could not meet at a 4 o'clock time slot until sometime in May, but the staff from the county said that that was not true, that that was, in fact, they could meet on the 15th and the 21st at 4 o'clock. The mayor responded, saying we cannot, or that she could not attend the meeting on April 15th due to a commission meeting, and that she could not attend a meeting on the 21st because of a budget meeting. I responded after that to everyone, or at least to the county commissioners, saying that the city commission meeting on the 15th is at 7 o'clock.
Urban Renewal.
I haven't seen no statement of a meeting, there's no meeting on, listed on our website, or, and the 21st, 5:30, we have-
Budget.
Ten, budget. So, I also then stated that if the meeting couldn't be held on those two dates listed by the county, that I very much still could attend on Thursday if the meeting was at least moved to 3:30. I also stated in my email today that I plan on being there regardless of what time the meeting is, or when it is, as soon as I get off work and as soon as I can be there. I definitely feel that this discussion, I actually didn't have anyone from the county commissioner, the two county commissioners responded, but when I talked to Alice, she originally stated that the issue and scheduling was based from the county commissioners, but it looks to be like the issue is actually with the mayor.
Oh, well, we did, we did go through the, well, you don't, you don't have either of those days, dates available either.
Well-
Because I already had ruled those out, because we looked at the, at available meeting dates. Karen Bure is the scheduler, so she's the one that-
Well, I'd like to answer to the 3:30 meeting on Thursday.
I believe that they originally told me that someone has to leave at 3:30, so that I think it's an hour meeting, but we'll have to check on that again.
I, okay, well, and just so that I can say this, I don't know what makes their conflicts more important than our conflicts.
All right, we either.
When, when and where is this meeting?
This is at the county commissioner's office on Thursday. 2:30.
2:30?
And it's an open and public session?
Well, not really. I think it's just a, it's a, it's a-
But if you're going to have three of you there-
No, we're not going to have three, it's just two.
Well, if you have two, but if Rocky's going to-
Well, I know, we'll have to work, work that out, work, work those schedules out, because I, I didn't hear that until, you shouldn't give me a call first time tonight, so we'll have to work that out. We will.
2:30, this coming Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
I think I might want to attend as an observer.
We'll need to post this meeting.
Do you have time to post it?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, and I think I told you all the agenda for the meeting, so that's very-
I don't think so.
Oh, I did, but I'll, I'll send you the, I'll send you the original email. I thought I sent that around to everybody, what the original email was.
You did not.
I will do that.
Have not seen it. Also, when I had a conversation with you on the phone, you stated very clearly that when I asked you who would step in my place if I could fill in, or if I couldn't appear at that meeting, you said very much so that you thought that that would be Jim Nocita.
I think, I think I said Doug, too.
No, you said or Doug Neely. You also told me that you had contacted all the commissioners regarding this issue, and apparently you had not talked to Jim Nocita.
No, I haven't talked to Jim yet. Okay, we'll work out the, that meeting attendance.
Do you want the agenda items?
Sure.
I'm trying to have the last word.
Okay.
I do have one thing I need to make you aware of.
Okay, go ahead, Daphne.
I'm wondering if we, as a city commission, ever want to discuss water right issues, surface water, well water, if-
For when property is annexed into the city and who obtains the rights, if we want to have a formal policy on that. They-
We'll put it on the work session.
That's an interesting one. Anything else from future, and I'm just kidding. Okay, Larry?
I just want to-
That's not time sensitive.
I just want to mention that I'm talking to, I think it's the Main Street Board, I'm not sure if it's the board or Main Street owners, at 1:30 on Thursday, 1:30 to 3:00 at Wine Stock, just discussing our urban renewal program, kind of what's in there, how we got there, again, as they kind of orient themselves, where they may want to go. Again, as they kind of orient themselves, where they may want to go with things, so.
The Main Street Board.
Well, business owners? Business owners, thank you.
Oh, it's downtown business owners?
Yep.
Okay.
I plan on being there.
Okay, there are no other items to come before us? We are adjourned.